So I apologize for the late start. We are attempting to do a hybrid meeting, so we are doing a meeting in public, open to the public here, but we're also trying to make sure that those of you who can't get here or are still not comfortable coming out, have the option. So it's my understanding that we are on Zoom as well. And again, I apologize for starting late, but we had, we were having technical difficulties. I would like to start us off by just welcoming everybody back to the building. It is wonderful to be back. I know our staff has been back, and so we're thankful for them. And now we are back, and so it's nice to see faces. We are going to start with just approving the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? If you want, you can look at them on onboard as well. I'll give you guys a second.
And there are two sets of minutes, folks. There is our budget hearing that was on the same evening, May 6th, but at 7:00. And then our regular monthly meeting, which started at 7:30. So two sets of minutes to look at, consider.
Is everybody, Corey, you're good?
I'm good.
You're good. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Both sets or one set?
Both sets of minutes.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The minutes have passed, and at this point, we are going to go into executive session to discuss the matters of an employee at the library. We are going to go behind us in this closed room. Jean is going to join us. She's the administrative...
Assistant.
Queen. King queen. It all works.
Royalty.
Royalty. She's going to join us. We will be back to continue with our meeting, but we're going into executive session now.
So we're now moving to regular business. It looks like Francis is not here. We don't have an WLS report, but I believe if he didn't send one, I will make sure he sends one. We are now moving to president's report. I would like to welcome Lucille Rinnick, who is here. She will be joining the board in July. We are thrilled to have a new member. So she's here and she's ready to work, and so I just wanted to say that. Also, our budget was approved. And so we're thankful to all the residents of New Rochelle who always support the library. I always feel, and everybody hears me say, I feel like the luckiest person in the world because we have a wonderful staff and a wonderful community. So we thank you for passing the budget. And then the only other thing I'm going to say is, as I leave, I leave knowing that our building is really starting to fall apart. So I am hopeful to this board. My charge to this board is that please, please, please do something to figure out how we can maintain this wonderful facility for our residents without asking everybody to, you know, really stretch their imagination through much higher bonds and stuff. And if that's what you have to do, that's what you have to do. But I really, I impress upon you guys all to fix this wonderful building. That's all I have to say.
Do you want me to go over the dates or?
Sure, I can do it. So I also, you want me to adopt this, so we're going to vote on this. In onboard, you will see the library board meeting schedule for 2021, '22. It's in onboard, so I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at it. I'm hopeful that you have because we're going to actually vote on it.
And I had said it as an attachment earlier.
So one question, it says November 18th.
Well, Jean is going to be away that week.
Oh, okay.
We were wondering possibly November 4th she'll be there. It's just if we'd like having her around.
Okay, so my suggestion then is to revisit that. Unless you guys, we can vote on that now. So the dates are this, and if you guys want to look in your calendars or... The dates are July 8th, August 12th, September 9th, October 14th, November 4th, so that's a change. That would be the first Thursday in November. And then every other date is the same, except of course our May meeting. December 9th, January 13th, February 10th, March 10th, April 14th, May 5th, which is the public budget hearing and the monthly board meeting. And just May is always the first Thursday because we'll have the vote for the budget thereafter. And then June 9th. So if all of those, if people agree with that, we will send out a change to make that November 4th. And if somebody wants, go ahead.
Is there any way you could move the July week?
Yeah.
For the following week? Maybe she's away.
Sure, that's why we go over it. So the following week would be...
2022, is that right?
No, just next month, July 15th. Are you?
Yeah.
I think she's got to be here. Are you okay? Okay. You can zoom in if you want. She's like, I didn't say all that.
She's going to zoom in.
No Wi-Fi.
She's so dedicated.
So here are the two changes. July 15th and November 4th. So can somebody make a motion? And then Tom will send these out, and it will be on onboard. So can someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 library board meeting schedule with the changes of November 4th and July 15th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Are you opposed?
He's in line.
He's not? Oh, okay. The meeting dates have been set. Great. So now, Tom, it's time for your committee report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Our library operations, we are in transition, as you folks will know. We reopened on May 10th to the public. We were so grateful to see the community once again out there having worked very hard in the building, not having a connection to our patrons that we value. So I can say that, you know, things aren't working well, but to be totally honest, it's quieter. It's quieter than we thought. And this is not unusual. What I'm hearing from others about county libraries that have been close to reopening, they're finding people are not yet flocking July. Part of it, we believe, is due to the timing. June isn't busy. People are getting to have to do congratulations and other events. So we're hoping to see more people come to July. Things are working out quite well. Our public service, the public people are able to come in and use our technology, able to support them, et cetera. But so it's been either curbside has ended, as of June 1st, because we were unable to staff the curbside desk and issues with other service stations. But the big news that I believe people know is that we are moving to another phase of reopening on June 21st. And this is significant because we are now returning to our pre-pandemic hours here at Main Library, except for Monday nights. And we will probably go back to Monday nights at some point, possibly in the fall. And at Udon's Children's Library, again, returning to pre-pandemic hours. Since we have been open, and even prior to that, when we reopened in July, we had closed to clean, et cetera. That is not an issue anymore. So we will be open without any closures. And we think that will improve if anything is true as well. We will also stop taking temperatures of the staff. We will also revert to allowing people to enter and exit our facility from our three entrances as well. But in other regards, we are still being, we are still requesting that our patrons can stay masked today at county directors' meeting. There are two that are in there, five instructors, two are in question. And each library is relinquishing that law. Over 20 libraries are still icing the public and staff in the mask. Interesting. Only a few libraries are allowing vaccinated, fully vaccinated people to be unmasked. But by far and large, the county library approach has been careful, which is a little bit similar to what they did for the Congress. And, you know, and we're going to be putting more computers or online with more tables and chairs out, but we're still being more careful. One thing that we are doing is we're planning for all the library of us, summer programming outside of children and computers, both at the main libraries and Udon's Children's Library. And what we are asking is that people, our librarians, our performers, and our members of the public can mask. And again, that seems to be what most libraries are doing. To be honest with you, I think you folks all saw Sarah's question whether or not that was necessary. And my answer was, you know, at this point, we think it is. Who are we? Not everybody is fully vaccinated, particularly children. And also, we think that if we stop that, if we relinquish the mask rule, we think we lose quite a lot of people who otherwise participate in programs. And last but not least, as we always do, we have contracts with all our performers so that we, you know, understand the rules, the circumstance, the range. And part of the contract plan, which was, you need to mask. Maybe you can expect the staff and the members of the public to also mask. So basically, that's our story about reopening. We're very excited about it. And we're very excited about the summer programs for our younger people. Our summer reading games, 7502 as well. And we're hoping that we'll have a successful summer. Last year was reasonably good, certainly not been the days of before when we had anywhere from 650 to over 800 children participating. This year was far more measured than past years. And we answered them with 300, which was so good, but nothing like that number. And we're hoping that we'll be able to return to a more popular program.
I have a question. For the pickup, for the pickup. Particularly with older people. Is there any chance that we could do that? I heard you say that there's a staff issue. Is there any kind of...
It's a good question. We talked about it because it was popular. I mean, you know, in the most popular months, we would service, we would service between 700 and 850 patrons. You know, we are looking at that. We thought, maybe in the future, maybe we could create, you know, curbside hours, you know, not a whole suite, but it's something that we're talking about.
I think people would actually, I really believe we had the first five hours, people would be happy with it and maybe use a lot of that. I just think for some of you, because the older people are just, you know, really just...
You know what, it's interesting here than everybody else. Yesterday, I had a phone call from a patron, a woman, and she was older and had physical disabilities. She said, you know, I'm really busy curbside. And I said, fine, so we're going to maneuver. She said, this is impossible for me to come to the lockers gate entrance. I said, absolutely. And we talked to the staff at 4:00 yesterday. This patron, she's in a condition. So I can say, in a sort of an unofficial way, anybody that touches our business and says, you know, can you do that, we can do that. But I think we need to look at finding a way to do it at certain specified, you know, times of the day and at the end. We can talk to ours because it's been set up. But I think that's a good idea to put that to fore.
But I do want to say that business across, I think many businesses are beginning to establish their curbside pickup as a team and realize that still their productivity and businesses continue. People are still walking in for the convenience, as you know, we try to make life easier for a lot of customers and patrons and curbside, you know, why don't they come in and look for books themselves? I can just let them get a drop. You know, sometimes it's easier. If you look at supermarkets, right, there are a lot of working individuals that are easily placing orders with their groceries. And it's a thing, right? It's happening. So it is something that we've been establishing. I mean, to me, that I think that I would definitely continue to support and improve for sure.
You know what, it's good to hear, listen to you folks. We have a department asking that we re-open. Let me introduce that topic and let our staff start tuning in.
And talk about the children's library.
You mean on the 21st?
Yeah.
Yes. We are not, we are allowing access by our entrances. We are not keeping people count and level because to date, we had reverted to the 15% rule that our type of institutions, federal, to allow the new state guidelines. We kept a close to that. The only caveat to that might be through that children's library, which is by its nature so tiny. And because when summer comes, the parks and J C T and just generally people are walking down this middle area. So we make the D P, the numbers there. But yes, if we need to come in, 10 sets, and we won't be shooting out at 12 noon or 5:00 or 6:00.
But I'm hoping that the outside activity that probably takes place this summer and in the fall, they just start seeing those numbers increase. And I hope you know, honestly, can realize that, you know, you are coming in to our board.
And I'm hoping that once our programming begins, that families will come. And once they're in the children's outlet, the garden, or in the, you know, the patio area, you know, children's library, there's more of a sense of immediacy of, let's walk into the library. Let's see if we can find some books for, for the family. So that's what we're hoping. But, you know, one thing that I should tell you is that our children's staff and teams have gotten active programming and coming up with a series of programs that will involve staff and will involve performers. And we're going to continue to do some sort of time to reach their kind of curbside service, we're going to continue to do some virtual programs because they've proven to be really popular. And so we think there's an appetite and an interest, you know, for that. And the exciting thing about the outside programming here at Main Library, we're going to be using the children's outlet garden. We have hoped to buy a really strong tent that we're not available because of all that's going on. Hopefully, we're going to rent a tent we purchased, happily seated. We may have a stage, we're going to have a shed where we can start things. And so this might be not just a flip, but something that we might on the future, we might just have indoor programming, which is completely available to customers, but also an outdoor option with a tent that would protect people from letting use of sun on the bed. And at Udon's Children's Library, our study today, they're so clever and hands-on. We sort of created a kind of fence around the patio so that we can kind of control, you know, people in that space. And we also have an awning that we, two years back, we still grant for so we can protect some of our young people with that. So we're going to have a presence, and it's going to be exciting. Let's see what else. There's a lot of grant information that you've heard me talk about, that we finally closed to our circulation program. We're nearly done with the second floor renovation, Phase 1 grant program. Phase 2, we're still in the process, if you would go upstairs, we have added a lot in furniture, we've painted, we've carpeted, we've rewired. The teen area looks really wonderful, and your building looks great. But our other areas are still pulling together. We're still looking on delivery of a reference desk, some other tables, a new computer area, as well as new business center too as well for people. So that is, that's coming forward, and that's part of this Phase 2 grant. And there's a few grants that we keep on children's libraries. It's small, and we're nearly done in terms of closing. We're also engaging in good conversations with the senior Michelle about receiving some money from the care staff so that we can loan out white light units, but also phone hooks and maybe tablets.
And white light units, do we have a cap in the business or?
No, I, you know, I have these apps with a person that was in contact, and I did bounce. So I'm wondering...
I mean, I am...
The call computer?
Yeah.
Yes. Is it no longer?
I can, I can, I can try to think of it.
If you would, let me know, because we would like this information. But meanwhile, we will have access to foundation money to purchase these units. We'll have access to air room for the city of Michelle. And it was just the library system, as included as a pilot program, where we can loan out, you know, devices too as well. So, you know, the digital divide became very apparent during the pandemic, but it still exists. It's still a problem. And we're hoping that we can address it, not just with children, but with every age group in our community. So we're moving forward there. Another kind of interesting thing is, as you folks know, the board had made a decision further across the Norman Rockwell Museum to loan out our treasure, the Land of Enchantment, to the museum in Southridge, Massachusetts, as they were having an exhibit that related to Norman Rockwell and his fantasy. Certainly, there was a lot of art in that realm. And art painting is one of the most significant in that genre. And the board approved it. And very recently, the Rockwell Museum paid for the safe transfer and delivery. And the exhibit is up. One of our patrons, who was a teacher at Arnhem, particularly retired, wonderful woman, passed home in that area. And she went to the museum and found that our painting is there.
That's nice.
Yeah, it's just kind of cool to share with you folks. And if you want to see a painting from anywhere from now until October, it is in Southridge, Massachusetts, but if you'll come back to us. We were asked to loan it out to Michigan, Tennessee, and he said, no. You know, this is enough.
But sorry, I didn't even say something. Have a nice weekend. I'll never get it.
That's my, that's my separate my letter of the Arnhem. Oh, my God, yes. But anyways, and it's all insured too. And as a matter of fact, we took the Arnhem's place because why pay for something that's there? And the Rockwell Museum's first insurance policies to make sure that some people live there, you know, there's protection. And I'm almost done. Friends Book Store is open at our end. The friends are particularly excited to see us reopen on the 21st to see more traffic because they are anxious to continue to sell books. I had a conversation with Amy Peets today, and I said, all these ebooks are effective foundations. And she said, the strangest thing is that we are getting more beautiful books than we have in a long time because people bought books during the pandemic. And then they decided, no, there's not this anymore, let's give it to the friends. So Amy said, when people come back, they have to notice it's great community books that are very relevant to me. She's excited, and of course, when the friends sell books, it makes me feel all the way to that. And last but not least, I just want to sort of update you about the foundation. The first thing is that she posted a scatter dance that the foundation's been planning and postponing for a few months. It was in the color with a number of us. Postponed because of the pandemic is definitely on. It's the first Saturday in October, and they're starting to gear up the machine to do this scatter dance around the city of Michelle that relates to New Rochelle. And it's turning out to be a significant fundraising effort. They've got lots of sponsors, and they're looking for more participation from...
You can all be energized by our team.
Yeah, yeah, and because, you know, you've got to have a team, keep up your credibility and all of that. And the other thing that's new, but it's really coming better than yesterday, is the foundation asked if the library on the day following the scatter dance, which I think is October 3rd, Sunday, if we could use the library's hours of operation modified to focus on a number of things. One, sort of family care, in which there'll be all kinds of programming for children, including some adult programming as well. And also, we're hoping to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the second floor because we think all the pieces will be in, and we can try to bring in a board, our state local officials who have so supported us in that experience. But what's really kind of exciting is the theme that's being developed. And it's really started with a team librarian, Ria Sam, who's so creative. And she said, I want to do a mini comic. You know, for the teens.
That's fun.
And she has done this before, and this is, wow. So this is, she's now a rookie, you know, she's, she has good experience. Let's see. But the good news is we can, like, if I have to... I think a lot of people will enjoy it, and of all ages. And our head children's father, Simmons, said, you know, this is a great idea. And I want to focus our children's programming on sort of this similar idea. And we're thinking about using a superhero, super-powered theme, and we're starting to play, play with going into the titles like Supercharge Your World Within, NRPL, 3D Music Superpower, The Londoner's Culture of Learning. And we're talking about all kinds of programs. Masking, graphic arts, to teach kids how to draw their own comic books, live musicians, Godman, who I guess is the DJ. Refreshments, graphic novelist authors, a staged combat demonstration, 3D printer, VR game, but a product with a super world background for kids who take pictures as superheroes.
Yeah, we have you.
We think it's going to be a really exciting day that will sort of reintroduce the library to lots of people who sort of were not able to experience it. So that's that. The only thing I just want to run by you folks, make sure we're comfortable with it. If we achieve this, the library will not be temporarily quiet, I think. It won't be a place where you can come and achieve, you know, this solitude. It's going to be a little, it's going to be a little lost. So if you folks are finally protected for one Sunday weekend.
Yeah. They actually, I'm very glad they talked to me. My daughter's in a visual illustration class, and her own comics with her parents.
You look lucky to have them.
Yeah, she's amazing, and my daughter loved it. And she doesn't teach, she teaches, she teaches children's books. I'm with her for getting the parents.
No, no, no. You know, they are so, we're so old. You know, Comic Con, which I had from like, it's a few years ago, which is awful funny, it's happening that following week. And we're thinking, you know, traditionally, they get access to five librarians, and we're wondering maybe we can get some access using those market prices for...
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah, it's fun, isn't it? It's sort of like, very good, right?
Some of the people who are going to be at the...
Yeah, yeah, or any local artists or comic artists that we may know. I know, I know, because I know Mount Vernon Public Library does something similar, or I think they call it RapCon or something like that. What's it called? But they do something similar. They have some pretty cool guests, celebrities that are local. So I would not be surprised if we see a guy from...
It's a wizard for all, does real...
Yeah. Anything that we can do. And actually, I would actually consider, yeah, just a recommendation, Squiggy's.
Oh, we have a comic book.
They've been, they've been an asset comic book store. I remember I had a child, we were home there. They've been there for years. I can guarantee you that the owner there, I can understand. But Squiggy. Squiggy, yeah. He may have some connections, so it'll be a good way of, again, a community-based collaboration with his store. He's the only comic book store I've been here for a year, from Marvel to Pokemon to Dawn of the White.
We do, because the late Catherine Crombie, who was a terrific children's librarian, she had four children. And the second child, Brian, who was a very accomplished writer and with comic books, he worked for Squiggy since.
Oh, okay.
Boy, and I think he still works there, I mean, he's still. Boy, can I get you still works there, I mean, even still. Maybe one day a week, but, but, and so we have that connection and we can reach out to Jeanie or Brian and see if we can make that. And that's a very.
I didn't do a great, great that.
So we're very excited, but the foundation is actively exploring, um, great possibilities. Danette has an interesting program that we might be able to get together, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, and the foundation annual meeting is the 21st of June. And we actually, we even mentioned about the, the.
I was going to do it through budget.
Okay. I don't have.
Okay. Okay. You want to turn around this panel?
Yeah.
I have to mark it. Why do we do this? You have personal proposal. Let's skip to the, let me, we're going to do that. And we're going to skip to committee report. And so why do you have some one thing on budgeted? Chuck's not here, but, where did I put it? But they, but it's, um. So there's a proposal, we are doing a grant proposal to grant requests to the Michelle Foundation Board, Public Library Foundation Board. This is right, right, for the summer, 2021. Um, 2021. So we are asking them for $9,000. And that's for performers, teachers for a total of seven weeks. It's going to include singing and it's the, it's the summer.
Program.
Program. So, uh, we, you would like, you would like to vote on this?
Yes.
Uh, did you onboard exactly what the details, exactly what it's for? Yeah. Uh, do you guys want to know more or explore the program? They explore the summer program. Do you want to come over here? You do? It's for Dwanie, who do performer. She's going to be there for six weeks, singing, dancing, performing, but it's popular sometimes. It's for Arch for Kids for seven weeks. Children learn to design in here, all kinds of building, a park for, go to the two big programs and then staffing total. And then supplies, art play, training. That's a total of like, like a hundred and a year and a half, uh, the foundation board. Yeah, 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 yeah. Or they proposed it to approve, uh, they asked him of the nine thousand.
No, it's, it's twenty-nine thousand.
Why do I have, why do I have nine thousand?
It's part of it.
You should do. Okay, so there's more. There's more, baby, my, my, lots of, all, teen, teen ahead of toddlers, yoga for top, checkmate chess club, young readers book club, yes, so twenty-nine thousand. I can make that multiple days, I believe, to approve the request for twenty-nine thousand dollars from the, uh, library foundation for the natural this library program of the summer. Second? My second, on favor? Uh, you agree? Thank you. Favorite? Thank you, guys. Um, yeah, thanks, Tom, and the foundation.
Thank you, foundation. They shocked us with this, so it's been a lot of money, wanting to be realized, but it was amazing.
Um, so, um, Tom, you want to leave your personal report?
Um, happy to announce that we've had three new hires since, since we reopened. And I would ask you to make a motion to accept the hiring of Sandra Perez, who is an hourly library assistant. Her start date was May 17th, her wage per hour is $24.21. Um, second new part-time employee is Sandra Mendoza. She is also a library assistant hourly. Her start date is June 1st, 2020, of course, $24.21 is her hourly wage. And the last person is Keishon Wellington, who was hired as a page in the children's area. Her start date also was June 1st, 2021. Her beginning wage is fourteen dollars.
So I'm going to, see, I'm going to move to, to approve the hires that Tom has listed. Sandra Perez, Sandra Perez, and two times. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Um, just a few more things and one last, our marketing communications support member will be starting on June 16th. Her name is Lisa Fisipouz and she comes very well qualified with field capital. She has extensive background in marketing communications for a variety of organizations, mostly in the nonprofit sector, but the JCC and other subsidiaries. So she's done tremendous marketing communications. She's also in a program as well. She's a long time Michelle resident and she knows the impact in the community. They raise the children, give up the children, run toward the schools. And she's with the business to have somebody who has a background in experience, um, began. And there's lots to do and additions. All the things that are going on, Lisa will be integrated into our, uh, the process of communication. So, so we look forward to seeing Lisa in the very near future. Um, we are also looking at, um, um, let's see, hiring of some part-time positions because we have some gaps, particularly the children's.
Yeah, CARE staff, we are, we are building a ground community report. Is there anybody here who would like to, who would like to? Who wants to live next? Uh, next.
Well, what?
Retired.
Oh, I figured I was going to, I was going to announce your retirement after, you know, right?
Okay, so next is maybe the waiting committee. Dan, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, so as Tom stated, on October 2nd, uh, will be the date of the, uh, staff of games of, um, the first group of the grocery, NRPL Foundation Board. Um, it'll be up and running July of 2021. Um, and one information was going out, of course, I've already had paid their team membership. I'll give them an update there is coming up soon.
When is that, is that October?
The event?
Yeah.
October 2nd, Saturday, October 2nd. Uh, so yeah, the city of Minnesota will be in game one after teams complete the score for the most points in two hours. The second thing in response to the wifi's, uh, lens to school district, the contact person will be Anastasia Sorsatos.
Well, this is new.
This is new. Anastasia Sorsatos, I'll send that email over to you, Tom. Um, uh, this person is a new IT director and is happy to give us.
Thank you.
In regards to what, my understanding is that they have been elected because of, of stuff, but let's see. May maybe some students are still for you. Um, and the se- second piece, I had a quick question about the community children's garden. Is there actually a garden, garden or is it more of a, uh, local purpose outsource?
Well, you know, it's, it's interesting, Dan, sometime you want to take a look at it. It's actually a garden that was, um, has been, has been cultivated over the years and it was removed during the pandemic. It was a really wonderful situation where we had a hoisted, um, floor, you know, we had a.
True.
No, but so, you know, there's a particular project, hoisted that has a special project.
That.
Anyway, um, young man from the Michelle, his project was to restore the children's garden and they did an amazing job and it looks great. So it is a garden, but it's also a space that can be used for.
For that plants and stuff like that, that garden. Planks and.
It does, it does, yeah.
So what I, what I wanted to share is, um, I have an organization that is willing to donate a hundred and fifty already grown vegetable seedlings that are already sprouted and stuff like that. And maybe one happens to plant in itself and cultivate the garden here. So I'll, I'll, if you can, Tom.
Yeah, but that's, you know, you know, I'd like to talk about it. I think we, we've had some really great, um, programs related to, to seeds and growing. Um, I'm not sure if we could fit all of that, but.
Yeah, that's whatever, let's talk about it.
Okay.
Do you, I wanted to mention the June team event that happened. I'm looking in, um, you, I'm looking.
I had it.
I've received so many.
Let's see, I have a reaction today. Hold on, hold on. Hold. So Saturday, there is a, not this Saturday, following Saturday, uh, there is a June team event. Uh, has a really extensive schedule.
Got it. Um, it's called Happening Perseverance. From nine to eleven, it's at 4:00 it was Community Garden, another garden. From 12:00 noon to two, there will be work shown in the rotunda. And then also from, um, we and I, there's a point one at Thomas P Cottage Museum. So I would think.
Uh, thanks, I'm sorry. But even for that, nine AM to eleven AM, you'll have a Tai Chi workshop in the beginning. Uh, Congresswoman Sarah and Edgar Ramos, who gives a remark that will have the history of the team. They'll both be drumming in different parts and crafts. Uh, following in City Hall, there'll be awards, presentation, host by Westside, there'll be different performances, spoken word, vendors outside, food trucks, uh, more performances. And then the third location, where? Oh, uh, time's been high. It will have more performances, a special museum, a walk-through and they'll end the night with a showing of a film, if I'm not mistaken. So it's a full path, literally, day from nine AM to twelve, so.
So even if. So even if you don't have all day, it's definitely, you know, stop in or something, um.
There are a few.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I just don't know why we are not one of these sponsors, but, um, opportunity missed.
Right, well, we were involved in conversations, we were supposed to be hosting the event there this year.
Maybe I'm. Uh, but I just wanted to.
Next year we'll be there.
Lots of observation.
Well, why did all of this come in without board? Probably it didn't work best.
We cut the bill.
We had offered the theater and, and we thought we had something set. And then I think the fact that we had to, um, we talked about social distancing and so, that the theater would not have, they had to ask you that they won't.
Yeah. Um, the finance committee, for it.
So, um, just very looking at the banking relationship, time between eleven and competition. And I need two more events to submit here for calls into us. We have one in October, so we have a kind of two at every time again. And once those two submit, we will go to, uh, we have, um, that and then, oh, that. So I don't think it's time to talk about it.
Right. Um, first today, personally, fifteen ago, um, the personnel committee, um, had been, um, meeting with the unit reps. Um, uh, we were supposed to meet, but, um, because of personal reasons, we had to push that back. Um, just so you guys know, I will be continuing on, on that committee. We, we do have that product, just to end, just to get into negotiations so that there's time really, um, so that's that, that's all I have on personnel.
We talked about the, we had on Tuesday a request about the retirement of the market, the city department.
So when do you want to talk about that? You just want to update everybody?
Well, I also want to get more of a convenient word resolution. Um, so let me just tell you, um, as Jeanette mentioned, we do have two upcoming retirees of staff who have worked many, many years here, distinguished careers. One is a murdering three Beth Mills and, um, the other person is retiring is our, our senior clerk to Beth Powell. And between them, they have here us almost eighty years, which is really, it's really quite amazing. And, um, Beth Mills is having a party with, with one member sort of to attend, if they're able, able to next week. And I can send more details. But, um, as we look at, um, the murdering three position, uh, we felt that, um, that, that, um, keeping that position would not be in the best interest of library and how we staff, however. So we talked with the person up in the U C chair of approval, pending, more approval, to take that library three position and carve it into two positions. One, a librarian, two, in charge of circulation services, which was a major area for, for Beth Mills. Um, and the other physician would be a librarian, one, a reference librarian in the above services area. Uh, because with the departure of Ms. Mills and the departure of Roxy and Matt, sadly left us in December of last year, as well as two part-time people, the staff's ability to manage the, the desks is being compromised. So by eliminating that one, that one librarian three position and replacing with these two other physicians, we're going to have more staffing hours and the salary, um, equivalencies are fairly, fairly, uh, people. So we were asking for that as a resolution. And the other, um, change is a little less dramatic and that is the senior clerk two, um, position. We would like to change it to a viable library assistant position. And that position would be anchored in circulation, but also the first floor information desk. Um, the first floor information desk, which we introduced a number of years ago, has been a tremendous success, but we're having problems staffing it. And it's our idea in this new configuration to make, we make that desk to responsibility of the circulation librarian, the librarian two that was created, where that person can sit that desk and also be adjacent to circulation services. And the clerk position, the senior clerk two position, making it a library assistant position, will allow them to also work that, work in that desk and, um, penitentiary disintegration. So it would be, um, it would be a good solution to our staffing those. And, um, and it would also allow us with the librarian assistant to, again, to attract more people who are part of the goal, who speak Spanish, because of course, we have a population that loves and uses our library and we want as many Spanish speakers as possible to connect with that population.
So I make the motion that we, um, we approve, um, Tom's recommendation with regard to, um, creation of a new position, um, to, uh, create some new positions to replace those that are retired and some changes that are retired. Second? All in favor? All opposed? Great.
Thank you, boy.
Yeah. Um, all in favor? Special part?
Yeah. Um, what did I say? Um, we see different, uh, paying process, our teaching, load down process has begun. We have a client, we have a couple of our partners. Um, we are negotiating a date for our first head focus meeting, which will be focused on board members. Um, we're looking at next week. We don't know the date yet. It will be a public meeting. We will not be providing a Zoom link though, and we will not be, um, having any public comments. Uh, but we are in a client, we will be needing ones and it will be probably, we will be. Um, and this is a chance for our consultants and partner folks to, um, ask public questions about the vision for the library, um, over the next, you know, five years beyond. Uh, related to make sure everyone voices their contacts. It will be part of a widespread effort to get, and when voices are in the council, we're doing a community white survey, community white town hall, focus group of staff and other, uh, stakeholder groups. So really excited, um, and I think there will be lots of, we will, all our, as the board members, obviously we'll have a chance to go to, but we can also do the survey. We can also spread the word, you can go to word up, please. Because then the radar, um, is something really, really critical for our, for our library. Um, and kind of adjacent context. And kind of adjacent projects, other kind of pending, career projects and other building improvements are all, they're all on hold. We'll definitely figure out kind of the picture.
For the next two kind of. I thought the justice system is really good job. This past year, there were some kinds of getting input. Yeah, we talked about. Okay, good, yeah. We're gonna be back a little bit. Yeah, and they had like a staple of the future, they could have looked at. Yeah, so.
I started out the report, I forgot. I'm president of the Nashville Council for New Year's Service. So I'm a board of P O E, we have a club as well. And that's, that's pretty much a cross-sectional role, not the proper organization to discuss. They were chatting service, New Michelle, or how New Michelle about service. So please make sure that we do the council and we have a meeting once a month and stuff. What happened is said, we're looking at part of.
Will you hit this topic, you two, about who?
Exciting, very exciting. Do you have more to add?
No.
Okay, well, we did, so we have a little ad hoc committee with Lori and Sarah and I, with Tom, you know, with the consultants and for that we, you know, figure out what we have to do. We do not have a technical. It's exciting to support a summer handhold. We're doing the fall, we understand, or making sure people are around. But if we've got the dead office.
Great. So finally, before we go to public discussion, it is time to nominate a new board of trustees, slate, new officer. So the nominations committee, which definitely got to the point, have talked, we talked, and we talked. And the slate going forward, and this is no need to use anybody. It's dead, well, can talk to, actually. The slate going forward, we are proposing Whitney Barrett as your next president, Dan Monet as the next vice president, and Sarah Lenoy as your next secretary. So that's our proposal. Any questions? And they will start at the next meeting. All right, I know, waiting for any questions? Nope? Okay. I make a motion to approve the slate proposed by the nominations committee. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations. And now we have public discussion. Do we have any?
So I, this is Dieter Karts' last meeting. So I personally want to thank you for your time and service at A C S D. As well as the president, I personally have learned so much from you. Not only do I consider you a mentor, but also a friend, and a militant advocate and a strong voice within our community in all sectors. Latin American, Latino, Hispanic, white, whatever it takes, maybe. You are a true inspiration. You continue to inspire me to work hard, to be better together. I can be, but most importantly, an active community member. You know that sometimes I call you to just talk and talk and to get your, your live words and mentality that's inspiring. And I have so much love and respect for you, so thank you, Dieter, for it. Your commitment to the library, to the community, to pulling us together, being a group. And I am more than certain that we will continue on with that and then everyone here. And with our new addition, the new Chris Kastie, which I welcome her to this challenge to continue on the growth of New Michelle. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much for all you've done for inspiring me and continues to inspire our community.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I'm here too. I'm facing it out. We're gonna miss you, but we'll still have a piece of you.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes, I, I am going, yes, I can't say it anymore. We've seen that people did, but thank you. You, you were great, integrity, wise, you're funny and delightful. And with the support of you, and you're not going anywhere, so. But, but you meant this capacity and you are looking and all the capacity.
Welcome to the field.
So I'm kind of baby here. And you, I'm very headstrong on a lot of, headstrong on a lot of things, but I do listen sometimes, doesn't seem like it, do I? I do listen and, you know, I know me on a straight and narrow path. And you're not going to be in July and you're like, oh, goodness, darn it. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you. I'm very regarded, different in a lot of things, but you, you are really, I don't want to say, you are inspirational. You are, as you said, wise, everything Daniel said. But I would never know that much I was sitting here on the floor, right? I don't, I don't know much about you, myself. So good secret secret, right?
Thank you so much.
They're really, really great. You said I might be, I want to get an E take. And I'm going to go to the. You know, wireless. So, you know, it's so great to see you. So, you know, seeing all you, seeing you are always a piece of stuff. And I know you're on the hearing, so, so, you know, I was gonna see you. Thank you so much for your service. It's really, really appreciated. And it's great to see the other side of child, I feel. You know, I keep recalling to jobs and, you know, you know, see from the end of it. But great, it's only, hey, you know what? Everything I can do in my seat. And I can remember that type of thing so much.
Thank you for our celebrations. We did clean the wire.
I just, I love this board, so thank you guys so much. I feel just, we have a great, great group. Heather, Paul, we're good, that's not like, no, we, we're good. We're good, we don't have so, wow, we don't have so much that you guys have. We don't do all that stuff. So I just, I appreciate each and every one of you a lot. So I, well, it's only because you guys have been there to help with these. Thank you. So now, we do have a public to be heard. Robert Abey. Okay, so can you come over to the wire?
Hi, I'm Robert Abey. I'm a bunch of little constituents, I want to go straight to the point. I was handed a very disturbing notification today. I've been there five years in a library. Apparently, it seems like very disturbing. This is, I think, a few of the rights of others to use a library. Where else has I been coming here about seventeen years? I've donated blood to some occasions, red pumps, and other branches. I've donated books to the bookstore. I know Amy and Claire, they're beautiful people. I object to this, I like the, rather non-limbo in my estimation. Mr. Japhion, can we listen to your stuff? Right, you say, you allege that I've been breaking the fine of books as fine. I wouldn't wonder after donating thousands of books to the bookstore. I've checked out hundreds of books in DVDs over the years. Why am I suddenly doing this in your estimation? And who have made this accusation? I wish I would say it to my face, because I have written these entries. And the implied, I have a bottom here of the place, even though. Only time I have a comment, which is really only maybe once or twice a week, even less many times. I reserve most of those, I just take them off many times. I don't like this implication or the threat. I don't use it much. If I talk in lobby, it's usually a danger there. But several staff are probably. There's several staff that are off camera, can't recall their names. They're very kind to me. I was met this till twenty twenty-six, and like I said, I thought. Apparently, it's state the numbers to kids in the second floor of the library. I've never checked with the kids. Or in the Blue Center, those wonderful folks who are stealing people's ID, posting videos of cyber punching people, assaulting other people, using stolen credit card information. Apparently, you might want to send you that. They're not threatening anyone, right? But this implies that I'm a threat or that I'm disturbing other people. I'm taking this end of that. I have no criminal record. I've been at the same address, playing room, I'm really upset. It's really appealing. I have no criminal record whatsoever. I've donated a lot to this facility and so on. You know, mobile, posted app, and after I donated, you do this. So that's why I do consider this.
Thank you.
You have to consider this.
We don't reply during this time, so we have not at all been discussing it. We don't reply those, we don't own up, we don't have. So we do act in our role and board members right now reply to this. But we do appreciate you sharing it with us.
Now I have two problems, I said, when I might be notified by an email or something like that, you know? Because really, this is scary. I got this, this is like, you know, being cyber punched, I suffered on this street. I'm sorry.
So we will take this to our staff and they will follow up?
I have no criminal record. I don't even have a problem with staff. One person that was very disrespectful, seven or eight years ago, I laughed about him, Mr. Kofi, who used to work here. He said, don't worry about it, shoot that way to the door. That was the one time, he was my favorite staff, you know? I'm sorry, he's gone. I know I talked to Mr. Kofi, it's going on this, you know? It would be somebody I could talk to. Thank you. For your attention, my brain there. I'm sorry. One more, I know I'm exceeding my time, I apologize. But what might be considered?
So again, we're not in a position now to even talk about that. So we will, our staff will consider all these and it's our staff that will. But you're more than welcome always to comment and share your thoughts and how you feel about it.
Well, according to this, I'm banned in facilities. According to his notice of New Michelle's department, I mean, basically tried and convicted. I won't know who I care to, if somebody really has that much time to notice my various so-called misdeeds, they really want to walk up, you know? This is really disheartening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So no one else? All righty. So I make a motion to adjourn this meeting. All in favor? All opposed? The meeting is adjourned.